Okay, at 7:00 PM, this is the council meeting for the city of Albernett for Thursday, January 9th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm gonna go ahead and change the agenda order for a moment to recognize the Lynn County Sheriff's Department, so we can get those folks back on the road. Before you give your report, I would like to recognize that it is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. We appreciate both you folks out there on the road taking care of us, as well as the entire Sheriff's Department. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We'll go ahead and let you do your report.
My name is Deputy Schmidt. Looks like we had 109.1 hours of the 43 acquired for the last month, and we responded to 28 calls for service. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Council questions for the deputy? Very good. We do appreciate. We'll be approving, well, I assume we're gonna be approving your contract for another year at this Senate Council meeting as well. So, we do appreciate you folks coming in and giving us excellent service, including your SRO.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, that being said, we'll go ahead and continue on with the regular agenda. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Here in the city of Albernett, we do conduct the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I'll go ahead and ask everyone to stand, and I'll lead us in the pledge. You'll face the flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number three, which is a roll call to establish a quorum. I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do that for us.
Councilor Menzies?
First one.
Councilor Sarason?
Here.
Councilor Schon?
Present.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Yep.
Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business this evening. Item number four, I have a slight adjustment to for the approval of the agenda. This is my fault. I failed to notify the clerk in time that we needed to reappoint the clerk for the January meeting. I apologize for that. We will be editing the agenda to add item 11H. 11H will be added for appointment of the clerk. Again, I apologize that that wasn't done timely, so I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended with item H, appointment of the clerk. Move by Schon's?
Sorry.
Second by, I think it was Minson got a little louder there. So, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, the motion carries. Item number five has already been taken care of, and we'll move on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. I was going to say, if we got, made it to 8:20, we would be at 20:20 and 20 seconds in 2020, but we're not gonna make it to 8:20. I hope to have this agenda completed long before then, but that will only happen once in our lifetimes if you want to recognize that at 8:20 tonight. So, a little interesting piece there. Employee reviews were conducted for, these were mid-year reviews. Those were completed in December. Those are available for the council folks if they want to review those. Those were done for both the clerk and the Public Works Director. Those are available for review if you want to see those. Both excellent, by the way. Excellent work for the city. Also, I want to remind the folks that we do have our meeting on the 14th at 6:00 PM. That is our budget workshop that's coming up, so we'll need to make sure. Would you send out a reminder too for the folks that aren't with us this evening? Chief, you'll be there?
Yep.
All right, thank you. We also have a meeting, which we can talk about later on with the fire station update, but with our architect, MGA, on the 22nd at 5:00 PM for those folks who can attend that as well. That'll be a, is that, that's the non-quorum meeting, right? That's for our folks with the, that's on the fire station committee. Okay, one other item, the personnel policy manual. I think we're nearing completion of that. That was an initiative that we wanted done in the last, in the last calendar year, and I think we're really close. It's down to just review by council. And that update, I think we're also trying to finalize some benefits or something like that. So, let's get that completed, get it out to council, let them review it. We can probably use our new software piece for that if we get that through. Okay. All right, I just want to make folks aware that we have hit that goal for the updated personnel policy manual.
Will changes be highlighted in that, or are we just reading through?
Yes, yeah, there's several in there. So, a lot of good updates and everything, but it's gonna, it's gonna have to be scrubbed. I mean, it's, it's kind of the best of all worlds. I'm sure that council's gonna want several changes to it. So, okay. The, I'm sure it's gonna probably be other comments as well, but Christmas decoration. Who took down the tree?
I.
Okay, all right. I don't know who all does that, but anyway, thank you. Appreciate that. I know that that's in your report as well, but I appreciate all that getting done. And then, my last comment is for everyone on council. I know we don't have everyone here, but at the beginning of 2020, I do appreciate everybody and all the efforts that this council does. I think it speaks volumes with the, what I hear from the citizens and how smoothly things are going, and that's across the board. I hear with everybody on the council, certainly the clerk, Public Works, the fire department. I think that we have a good thing going in the city of Albernett, so I want to thank everybody for their service in general to the council. That completes my, my comments. I'll go ahead and recognize council. We'll start from the left. Councilman Menzies?
A couple things. First, with the pending snowstorm, this is mostly to the citizens of Albernett. Get your sidewalks shoveled. I believe our ordinance says within 24 hours. Secondly, do not throw snow back out in the street, please. It's a hazard, and if guy has to make a trip back around, which he really technically shouldn't do, it wastes time, money, resources. And also, just from my experience piling snow, you're actually liable for that snow if you push it back into the street purposely.
And I have one other thing, but I forgot it.
We can come back to you. I mean, you're an older guy now. You had a birthday a month ago.
I know.
So, we understand that. We can come back to you. Bethany, for your comments, I also had a note here to say thank you. She serves on several committees that support the city, the 911 Board, the Commission, the folks that the mayor set on the county commission, but as pro temp, she holds that position. So, I know you're attending two meetings, I believe, this month, so thank you for that. I know you're doing a lot for the city as well and serving on those boards, and I know the boards are very appreciative for the work that you do. Amy, go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, that was part of my update. So, emergency management, this month has budget meetings coming up, and we finished the strategic planning as well, so I'm sure budget will align to what we're looking to get done in the first year. So, if anyone has any questions on that, feel free to reach out. And the 911 budget comes up in March, so that'll be another meeting that we have. And then, to our personnel, I finally stopped and noticed the water box and the clarification about payments on that. Thank you very much. It's super clear, and I'm sure everyone appreciates it, and it's just nice to get process straightened out, so there's no gray area and questions. So, thank you for working through that.
We're lucky to have Dave Bozenberg back on council. Any comments? Okay, having completed the, the council reports, we'll move on to citizen comments. There are two type of comments here in the city of Albernett. The first are agenda items. If there's any citizens that wish to make comments on agenda items, you can do so at this time. Just state your name and address, clerk, for the record. You'll have five minutes to make comments on agenda items. Are there any citizens that wish to make comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to non-agenda items. Again, you can make comments. Just state your name and address, clerk, for the record. You have five minutes to make comments to the council. Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to item number nine, which is the written reports. We'll start out with the fire department, the council. You have these in your, in your packet. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review these. The only thing I would say, I did, one question I did have. You had a, we had a CO2 alarm within the city. What was the, was that anything serious? Hopefully not.
I don't know. It wasn't there.
Okay.
I know the gas company was there.
Is that the one south of town? The apartment, was it the apartment? Okay.
There was a fight between neither gas company serviced it, and they, and why it managed to show up.
Okay, very good. Any other comments other than your written report?
I got one guy that wants to go to Winter Fire School in Ames, and it's 125 bucks for two days.
Winter Fire School. When is that again? You're recommending approval on that, chief?
Yes.
Counsel?
I see nothing wrong with going to school.
As long as it's worthwhile.
Chief, you wanting a motion on this tonight?
Yeah, 'cause due February 7th, the price was up.
How much was it again?
125 bucks for two days.
Is that James?
The firefighter?
Oh, Nate Graham. And I think they're staying at a friend's house on the, hotel.
So, there'll be expenses as well?
Yeah, they're probably.
125 dollars plus expenses. A motion by Schon's?
Second.
Second by Sarason. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, the motion carries. Any other comments, chief?
No, 'cause the coat with the bag.
Are we doing that consent agenda, or is that a separate item?
That is a separate item.
Okay, all right.
I got one custody. Would you change? Drop Sharon Robertson off your report here. It's Danielle.
This one comes up, Albernett.
Yeah.
Website comes up to Sharon.
It just helps populate into his Outlook or his email.
Oh, you need to edit it on your email, maybe? It's still on your address book that way, or what?
No problem. I'm not.
Okay.
I have TJ. It's going to the correct person. It's just.
The, it's public record is the.
Public record.
Yeah. I mean, we're including it in the packet, and it's public record, so.
For a couple of years.
Yeah, if you're gonna submit them an email, it should be correct. Otherwise, you could do it in Word, I guess, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Other questions for the chief? All right, we'll move on to Public Works. Again, the report's in there. Any other comments?
Nope.
Any questions for a guy on Public Works? We'll move on to NC, the clerk's report. Danielle, any comments?
Um, no. I forgot. I didn't hear. No, I think I'm.
Council questions for Danielle, and then the city clerk report. Anything? No, okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to item number 10, which is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have any additions to the consent agenda, clerk?
We do have three bills that have come in since the consent agenda was submitted. We have Woodward Community Media, which is the Lynn Newsletter for Publications, $183.81. City of Robbins for building inspections, $212.94.
Okay.
And Batteries and Bulbs, which is Batteries Plus for Fire Department pager batteries,
Any questions on the additions to the consent agenda, council? Hearing none, I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Move by Sarason. Second by Menzies. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries. We'll move on to item number 11, the new business. First item is item A, the fire department. Request to purchase medical bags. We'll recognize the chief.
Up front there, the two bags I was looking at. We need two pieces of them. So, we need four bags total. Our bags now are tiny, and we got so much dirt thrown in, you can't find stuff. Those are the same bags Mary uses in the fire department. For the four bags, it's $1,041.78. But one will have our oxygen and all of our supplies in there, and then it'll be the medical bag.
I think we have it here also. Your total request, again, $1,041.78. He also has an itemized list here. Do you have the council? Do you have this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I have this also.
Okay, all right.
So, there's a pair in the two different vehicles.
Yes, so 139 will have two bags, and 136 will have two bags, and they'll be identical. So, if you pull bag out, we can track everything, and we in the same spot. We're not having a big career.
You have the funds for this in your budget?
Yes, we've got $19,782.
Thank you.
Now subtract 125, whatever.
Everybody requested is budgeted. Questions for the council? Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move by, no, no, Bozenberg?
Second.
Second by Sarason. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries. You'll take care of that ordering then, chief. All right, very good. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number B, discuss the transfer of reserve to capital project funds for this fire station. This is a resolution. I had to have a copy of it here. I don't know. We have a copy for everybody. The resolution copy is in there.
Yes.
It is in the package. Okay. This is Resolution 1, 2020 dash 3. This is a resolution to transfer $100,000 from reserves into the fire department equipment, or the fire department fund. This is the second $100,000 transfer that we've done. We did one last year, if you recall. This is the one that, for this calendar year. This is part of the fire station initiative for the purchase of the new station. The reserve account, do we have, do we have the paperwork with the totals on there?
I believe so, yeah.
Yes, it's highlighted there. You should have it behind your original one there, the equipment reserve. It has the totals in there if you want to see those. It's highlighted at 299.910, and this is the completion of that project. It's an item we've talked about before, and so again, be at the approval of the council. Discussion on this? My only comments is, if we utilize the cash on hand, it's less that we have to bond A motion then by Schon's to approve the $100, or $100,000 transfer from our reserves into the fire station project?
Second that.
Second by Sarason. Any other discussion? All right, we'll need this by roll call for the resolution, please. Clerk?
Councilor Menzies?
Aye.
Councilor Sarason?
Aye.
Councilor Schon's?
Aye.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Aye. I'll let the record reflect that it was approved with quorum. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number C, which is a Resolution 01, 2020 dash 1. This is official publication. Any other comments on this one, clerk?
This is just administrative to name the Lynn Newsletter as our official publication.
You have a copy of the resolution in your packet. This is ministerial in its nature. Any questions about Resolution 01, 2020 dash 1, a resolution naming our official publication Lynn Newsletter?
Did we have concerns using the newsletter, given that, because they're not a weekly publication, correct?
They're weekly.
They are weekly.
Weekly, but there's a little, it was more on my end. So, you have to submit the prior Thursday to get it into the following Tuesday, so we had talked about looking at possibility maybe that, because it's more frequent, but I don't think it's necessary this time. I just need to make sure. I'm looking at my dates to see if things get submitted in time.
We do use the Gazette for some publications, do not?
We have when we have missed a deadline and we needed to get something published, and then we tried to rotate that it was in the Gazette instead of the Lynn Newsletter.
Cost wise, how do they compare?
I haven't done any comparing yet, but I can definitely look into that. And I know some, I was, it was suggested to me that we could name two, so that way if we want, if we missed a publication deadline in the newsletter, we could use the Gazette. We could name two official papers for publication, but I just don't look at what we did last year and the resolution, so. But I can look, see if we can see about adding the Gazette if you want as a secondary.
Is this something we need done tonight?
We're supposed to do it once a year in January, I believe. Is it like an administrative thing? But I can look and, if we want to approve it tonight, then I can look and see about amending it, or we can wait on it. I don't think it would be the worst thing in the world to do either of those. I don't think it would be, add it, approve it and amend it, or if we read it.
I just know we've run into issues, mayor, with the timelines for the Lynn Newsletter, especially if we have off-schedule meetings, and that's the clerk gonna pinch, and maybe she has to shift her priorities when that maybe isn't the most important thing, so.
Do we know the distribution of the Lynn Newsletter within the city as compared to the Gazette? I mean, I get the Lynn Newsletter and read it, but I don't get the Gazette as an example. Do we know what the subscription is in town?
I know. I know there are people in town who get it, because we've had some comments about having to put up a box to get the Gazette, but I'd love to see. We can check into that.
There isn't many people get the Gazette either.
No, that's probably what you're, are you wanting to table, or are you wanting to, what's your desire here?
I would say we can move forward with it, but I'd like to look into a possible amendment and just kind of look at other options, rather than just kind of doing what we've always done, if it's not working.
I do think down the road eventually, it's probably will turn ways out. I think that level legislators will have to look at whether or not continuing to have these certain requirements for publications and newspapers is, makes sense, because it's very costly and it's, like, people don't get this.
It's expensive, yeah.
Right. I know there's a lot of cities using social media and other outlets, so. But yeah, I will definitely look into the options.
Other council members, what do you think?
I don't, I don't have an issue, because I think when it comes right down to it, there's about as many people take the little paper, just take the Gazette, because there's a lot of people who don't take the Gazette.
Councilman Bozenberg?
As I was saying, not too many people take the Gazette, I don't think until, you know, if you can put it somewhere else, you know, on a website or something, neighbors or whatever. Fight for people to get it. I know there's only one on my, my street that's me who gets the Gazette, so, you know.
Yeah, I'm the only one on my street that gets it.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 01, 2020 dash 1.
It's a motion by Sarason.
Sorry.
Second by Menzies. Then, any other discussion? I'll need a roll call, clerk.
Councilor Menzies?
Yes.
Councilor Sarason?
Aye.
Councilor Schon?
Aye.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Let the record reflect it pass for the quorum. We'll move on to item number D, Resolution 01, 2020 dash 2, depositor and maximum deposit again. I believe this is administrative in nature, clerk?
Yes, that's correct. Just our annual naming of depository for the Karma State Bank.
Okay, and I'd seek a motion for Resolution 01, 2020 dash 2, a resolution naming depositories?
So moved.
Move by Menzies?
Second.
Second by Bozenberg. Any other discussion? I'll also need a roll call, please.
Councilor Menzies?
Aye.
Councilor Sarason?
Aye.
Councilor Schon?
Aye.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Let the record reflect it pass for the quorum. We'll move on to item number E, motion to set the date for a public hearing in the city of Albernett. FY '21 maximum property levy, the public hearing is going to be next month?
Correct.
All right, so I'm gonna move on to a public hearing for the FY '21 maximum property levy for February. What's the date?
It would be February 13th.
February 13th at the 7:00 PM meeting, correct? Move by Schon's?
Second.
Second by Menzies. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries. Item F, the Lynn County Sheriff Contract Review and Approval and Possible Motion. It's in your packet. It's, looks like the standard contract with the addition, the only change, I believe, it's increased by $1. Is that correct?
Yep, correct.
I have my same comments that I had last year. I'm not sure what we're getting, much more than before, other than they increase it by a dollar each year. I don't love that, but I do love their service. So, that being said, you have the option to approve it as it's submitted, or you could reduce the hours to offset the potential cost, or we could do something completely different and try to renegotiate, or whatever that may be, but I'll leave that at the pleasure of the council.
I think we should stick with our 43 hours.
Discussion is to take the contract as presented?
Right, with our 43 hours.
Do I have a motion then to approve it?
So moved.
Motion by Menzies to approve the contract as submitted with the increase?
Second.
A second by Schon's. Do, on the discussion here, do we have the dollar amount? Can somebody read the quorum, please?
It's 37.
37,000?
$37.
37.
$37. What's the total amount? Is it 16, 18? What is the name?
$19,092 a year.
$19,092 a year, okay. Any other discussion?
$15,91 a month.
Remind me, roll call or a rigor?
No, it should be rigor.
Rigor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries. We'll move on to item number G, discussing Town Cloud Agenda for Software Application. If you've been reviewing your email information that's sent out from the clerk, this is the software we've been utilizing lately, I believe, on a trial basis. I think we want to move to this permanently now. This gives several advantages to us, not only the information in PDF, but I believe it allows you to put it on the web and gives you not only the conversion over for the web for the public, but also some archival benefits as well. So, $50 a month, as I understand it, $600 a year and well worth it. So, any other comments from you on this software?
No, I'm just, I appreciate you all taking the time, taking time and looking at it and giving feedback.
I personally like it, but it's up to you guys.
I like it. I think it solves some of the pain points of not being able to get back to packets after we've viewed them. Usability for you, how is it to put it all together?
That's a better question.
Compared to not using it.
The demo, I just sent the stuff, the papers. I sent PDFs and Word documents, and they put it in there, so that's actually a really good question, but I'm sure.
This is a monthly, month-by-month type contract, so.
Correct.
If you decide it's a bigger hassle, we can always just.
Yeah, yep. There's no contract. It's just a month-to-month fee. And the guy that I worked with that did the demo, he came from Town Cloud, like, he was very helpful and very easy to work with, so.
Works for me.
Okay, then entertain a motion to approve Town Cloud for the $50 a month fee. Move by Sarason.
Second.
Second by Menzies. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, motion carries. You'll go ahead and take care of that contract. Thank you. All right, then as the agenda as amended, item H, this is the appointment of city clerk. This is the first meeting in January on the two-year cycle. Even though you have your two years in July, we'll go ahead and give you your appointment for two years now at the January meeting.
Thank you.
So, we will need a, a roll call vote on this as well, I believe, so.
Need a motion and a second and a.
So, all right, so we'll need a motion to approve the clerk per section 2.9.10, appointment of city clerks for our code for two-year appointment of the city clerk.
So moved.
Move by Schon's? Second by Bozenberg. Any other discussion? They're really thinking about it here. You know, I've been through, I think this is my third one. We've done an appointment, and the other two weren't like that. So, they had to really think about. No, I'm kidding. All right, any other discussion on that? All right, roll call, please.
Menzies? Yeah, aye. Sarason?
Aye.
Schon's?
Aye.
And Bozenberg?
Yeah.
Did anyone take the time to ask her if she wants to be?
Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. All right, so good. Your, there's your two-year appointment. Mark that on the calendar in two years, so I don't forget again. All right, we'll move on to item number 12, which is, and congratulations, by the way. Guys, we're.
We're cross board.
In two years, somebody else here will be doing it. Okay, item number 12, which is the old business, the Board of Adjustments, Planning, and Zoning, Discussion, and Appointments. If it's in your packet, I do want to make one change if you don't have it on there. I'm gonna read each board and the members as presented, and then seek approval to go ahead and get this done. So, the Board of Adjustments, Cam Ford, three-year appointment, Christina Smith, three-year appointment, Todd Wagner, three-year appointment, Nate Silkup, two-year appointment, and TJ West, two-year appointment. Planning and, you want to do these separately?
Yes.
You want a motion on these, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'd go ahead and seek a motion then to approve those names as submitted on the Board of Adjustments.
Can I make a quick?
Yes.
Question slash comment, and I assume I know the answer to this, but all of these folks have verified their interest in being on these boards, correct?
Yes, thank you for noting that. It's probably a good idea to note that. I didn't personally talk to them, but you folks did, so, yeah, okay. So, they are willing to serve for those terms, and there is an offset for each one of those, and you'll track those. All right, so that's the Board of Adjustments. Any other questions on those? Hearing none, and I'd seek a motion to go ahead and approve those folks for the three-year and two-year terms as submitted. Move by Sarason, second, second by Bozenberg. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries. We'll move on to planning and zoning. I'll read the names and their appointments. Brent Williams, three years. Josh Henrickson, three years. Jim Carver, three years. Greg Laramer, two years. And Brad Coats, two years. Coats, C-O-A-T-S, just like the one you're wearing. And again, would you confirm that they have all agreed to do their, thanks, thank you. Other questions or comments on planning and zoning? All right, hearing none, then I'd seek a motion to approve the names and terms as submitted. All right, hearing none, then I'd seek a motion to approve the names and terms as submitted for B and Z. Moved by Sean's, second by Menson, all those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries. Good, our two boards are filled. Clerk, would you update the city website to reflect those changes?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to 12B, ordinance change review, chapter 46 animals. This has been an item, just to catch up a little bit, Dave, if you hadn't followed it from the previous meetings, the previous ordinance had verbiage in there that made American.
Terriers.
What's the other name, American terrier, do you ever shoot terriers? Basically, it made them a vicious animal if they were over four months old or something like that. So, we not only have those types of animals in town that are not a problem, we have one that's a certified service dog. So, I mean, it became problematic, we had to go one way or the other with it. We either had to enforce it or edit the ordinance. There were other items too, that had come up from council and citizens, items that needed to be in the ordinance or updated or changed. So, this ordinance reflects those changes, as well as making that change to the vicious animal portion of it. So, the biggest thing, I think, with this particular ordinance was working out the relationship between the city of Albernett and our MOU, our Member Animal of Understanding with the, remind me, the.
Cedar Valley.
Cedar Valley Humane Society, so we did get that portion of it worked out. I believe we have the, we have the new ordinance ready to go for approval. Any other comments from you folks first?
Vet clinic here in town is willing to house an animal on a temporary basis, just to give us a little time to try and find an owner for a stray, which is something we didn't have before, so, yeah, that way we don't have to immediately take them down to Cedar Valley.
And you.
Or tie it to the water tower.
You folks deal with this more than us, I assume, I don't think this is epidemic by any means. I mean, what are we talking about for a lost animal or a problematic animal in the city per year?
Less, yeah, one, two a year.
Okay.
There's been a year and went by where there was none.
Okay, so, comments from council on this?
This might not be related, but you just made the statement, a certified service animal. Is there a certification for a service animal? Question mark, and I would think, wouldn't a service animal be exempt from any of this?
Working for the city of Cedar Rapids, I can tell you what their policies are, because we go over this a lot through ADA training, and you can tell you that federally, I believe, that service animals are considered either a pony or dogs, is the official standard, or whatever. The city's policy is kind of a don't ask, don't tell, if they say it's their service animal, we don't go into great detail with it or try to push any, trying to get official papers or any medical documentation or anything like that with the city. I would think that we would want to have a similar policy here, that we're not going to get into going over it. The particular animal that I'm talking about, and talking to that citizen, they showed me a card that they carried that showed that it was a service animal. I didn't go anything beyond that with the citizen, I took them at face value, so, that's the best that I can answer that particular question.
But the second part of that, it doesn't mean the animal's allowed to run at large or any of, I mean.
Sure. Personally, that's far.
Yeah, so there's still elements of the ordinance that would pertain.
Yeah, I just think that our old ordinance was in need of updating.
I agree.
So, I know a lot of the discussion was around, you know, definition of a vicious animal and how that then gets handled. So, have we confirmed with the Humane Society that they would be the ones to come apprehend?
You had most of the conversations, well, I defer that to you.
We, I sent them a copy of this ordinance, the amended ordinance that we're proposing, and they agreed to it. They just asked that if an animal is taken to the vet's office, that the vet let them know in case they get calls, okay, for that animal. Otherwise, they agreed with everything that was in there, so.
Because they would act as our animal patrol.
And the vast majority of this, of this new ordinance was taken from one of three places, majority of which was taken from another Iowa city similar in size and function as the city of Albernett. The second piece was, some was carried over from either Iowa code or Iowa ordinances. And then the last portion would have been carryover from our existing ordinances that was not an issue. So, there wasn't anything that was put in there that was pulled from the sky, I think that way.
My only other concern under definitions is item number 13, the definition of a kennel.
Yes.
We do have some residents that have four or more dogs.
Yes.
And I don't know the implications of us calling them a kennel.
Okay.
If that's not being, I don't think that's even being referenced in the ordinance, can we just start that definition?
Which item was it?
Under definitions, under the first portion, there.
Number 13.
For kennels, kennel.
I just don't know the implications if we were to.
Yeah, let me read it for the record here, it says kennel or kenneling means any place where four or more dogs whose ages are six months or older are kept for any purpose. I believe that was in reference to the breeding of animals, which is why that number was in there.
And that is only a definition, so if the word kennel is used later in the, that's under the definition section. So, I don't think there is a section that deals with kennels or kenneling in the actual ordinance, in the sections.
Yeah, I don't think so. But let me find out. If it is, it's probably when referring to holding them locally.
Under 446.6, they talk about a licensed kennel, which the vet clinic would be a licensed kennel, because they kennel dogs. So, that's probably why the definition of kennel had to be included in the ordinance, according to whoever did the copitation of the ordinance way back when.
Yeah, I would assume that's what it was referring to. Which may be the minimum definition for legally holding, where you hit probably state regulations.
Right.
I don't know, we can find out, is that something we want to do before approval? Would you prefer that?
So, there, you, there is people that have four or more dogs in town? Oh, I got, I can think of a couple now that you say that.
Well, I don't feel that we should put that restriction. If anything, if we can just clarify and make it licensed kennel and find out maybe what that definition, because then that would address the verbiage.
Right, right. So, you want to table based on clarification?
I would, I mean, I think we can get that sorted out by next month.
Yeah, I guess we're not in a rush to do anything here, we.
The rest of it looks good, so I'd say we can.
Other, other comments on this? No? All right, we'll go ahead and table item number 12B, chapter 46 animals pending the clarification of kenneling them. All right, 12C, building permits contract with Lynn County, we seek a motion to set the public hearing, that's also for February.
Thirteenth.
February 14th at the, 13th at the 7:00 PM meeting. And then the other item for that is whether or not we would set an administrative fee, which our other administrative fees are currently at thirty-five dollars. And I'd ask for clarification as to, a little bit of background and clarification on why.
As far as administrative fee, it's just if we have to do legwork on these permits. In theory, we shouldn't have to do, but we will, will in cases have to check ordinances and zoning if there's something out of the, because Lynn County won't do anything with our zoning. They will send it to us for our stamp of approval on zoning, so everyone's going to get a little bit of our time. And if it winds up taking an hour, we feel thirty-five dollars an hour is a reasonable fee to charge for doing that. So, that's why we add the thirty-five dollar fee on to the.
We're charging other administrative fees, public records and things like that, I mean, this is not something that we don't do.
Were we also charging the hookup fees as well?
Yeah, water, sewer.
I want to add, I apologize, I didn't put in here in the packet, but the public hearing is so that we can amend our current building code ordinance to implement the Lynn County building code, so that way our code will reference then to review the Lynn County's code. So, that's what the public hearing would be for, is to adopt that into our code.
Okay, so, we need to, I'll need a motion if it's the desire of the council to set a public hearing for the. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Public hearing for, to move to building permits with Lynn County, or to move over to Lynn County anyway, for our building permits and for our, all of our actions, I suppose, you know, for the actions for February 13th at 7:00 PM. And whether, and I think we can do it all as one, whether or not we want to have a thirty-five dollar administrative fee. And is that a hard fee, or is that something that we can do, an exception to policy too, if we so desire?
No, I think if you decide that's going to be your fee, that fee will automatically be put on every building permit that is generated through the county, that's the way it was explained.
Do you need two motions, or you want to do one?
Who keeps that fee, the city or the county?
We, that's basically the only fee we get, we get the, on a new house, we get the water and sewer hookup fee and that thirty-five dollar fee. But we also don't have to expend any funds at all going through the building fund, the building permit process, the county takes care of everything, so.
I think it's just a discussion on the fee at this point, we can, we can write it into it in there, but I'm definitely going to need a motion for a public hearing.
I move we hold public hearing on February 13th at the 7:00 PM meeting to discuss updating our ordinance to match the Lynn County building code.
A motion then by Saracen.
Sorry.
Second by Menson, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries, you'll set that in public, put to public notice, thank you. We'll move on to item number D, the auto pre-2080 agreement review. It's in your packet, I'll go ahead and recognize Bethany on this, I believe, you and Councilman Trump were at the last meeting, he's not present, so if you could give us a brief update on the previous meeting, and then we'll talk about this new one coming up.
Sure, so we met previously with two of the trustees for the township, walked through the new agreement. The one that's currently in place has been in place for some time now, and we've had discrepancies as far as what funds they were collecting as well as how those were being distributed to the city. So, the only thing that really changes in the new agreement is how that is handled. So, we make clarification based on Iowa code, what they will, what they will levy, and how they will make that payment to the city through using the county auditor, rather than going through their clerk. So, just kind of helps streamline the process a little bit. And then we've also put in a little bit of verbiage about meeting with them regularly, which I think is just a great practice. We had a fantastic meeting with them to just talk through, and there were a lot of things we're doing they're not aware of, so I think it's just a good opportunity to touch base.
And the meeting that's coming up, what are we, what are we hoping to accomplish here?
I'm going to defer to.
We're going to get the 2080 agreement set in place, to get the approval of the township to agree to the amended 2080, and then also talk about funding, we have a reserve fund, and we talked about giving money towards the new station, so we're going to discuss the funding efforts and talk about a dollar or not.
Okay.
And the updated 2080 has been reviewed by our lawyer.
One of the three trustees has a little problem with having the agreement actually say that the county will distribute the funds to us, but we're hoping we can smooth that off tomorrow night. Yeah.
It's, in my opinion, a non-negotiable, there, there's no reason for it to go from county auditor to township clerk back to us when the auditor already distributes money to the city, let's just keep, they have a process, they have systems, they have backups. Let's just streamline it as much as possible.
And it really is just one of the three trustees, so.
Well, I'll say this, when we were preparing for the presentation that we did to the public, I know we spent some time going through the minutes from years ago, and there was a strong written record and a desire at that time between the city of Albernett and the township for that fire department. It was, it was in the notes. So, I think that we should continue that relationship between the township and the city, and it should be a joint endeavor of both on their side and our side. So, I'm hoping that they recognize that and we, we continue that relationship, because the city is putting a tremendous amount of funding into this fire department overwhelmingly, a financial commitment at this point. So, as it sets today, they have not transferred any funding to us, they have done a hundred thousand dollar commitment, but even compared to what the city has put into place, we'll talk about that update in a second, but we are doing the lion's share of the funding right now, so I hope that they fulfill that commitment, so. Other, other comments? Anything else you want covered on that?
I just want to thank Steve, he got a report for us to provide the township that breaks out the calls, so that way we can show the township the number of calls that are going out between the city and the township.
Appreciate that, chief, that's always helpful.
I think it's an excellent idea that we have meetings with them, whether it's, I would say maybe quarterly or whatever, but I think it breaks down a lot of barriers of everybody, just for communication. If nothing else, I remember back a hundred and fifty years ago, Bill Spickley used to tape our meetings that we had with. And I remember that.
It was beneficial just for the hour or so that we spent together. To have that built into the agreement, I think would be important.
Right, that's a good idea.
They don't meet that terribly often, we could even offer our facility here for them to meet, you know, and then we could, you know, meet jointly and then let them do their thing too, you know. So, that's great. Because their meeting is in the clerk's home right now, which is fine with them, but still, we could let them meet here if they wanted.
Sure.
Scotch Dick, Ron Hoover.
Dave Meyer.
Dave Meyer, and Jane Sean's is the clerk. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, then we'll move on to 12E, which is the fire station update. We've already talked about several different items, one thing I would say is that we've, we've done several things for our fundraising efforts. I believe that we're up to about a hundred thousand in fundraising that we've done. So, it's going quite well. I think that we're, we have some folks that we're going to meet with within the next month or so for some additional funding that they're, they're looking to do. And we also have the, our gala, I think they're going to also help us out with some funding. And then, and hopefully, we'll get this released soon for our, our RFP for the construction work, and we're looking at April to start moving dirt, and I think that that'll also re-energize some of the fundraising portion and as soon as the weather's good, and double our efforts on that part of it as well, so. Other comments from council on the fire station project, or questions? Updates from?
The architect did specify that we would likely have a bid opening and then award the bid hopefully in March, so that would probably likely happen at the March.
Does anybody know, I know we made that, is he? Oh, help me with the words. Oh, we made that another district out there.
Old, urban renewal.
Urban renewal, you know, does that come Roosevelt Street?
We are still looking into if we have excess funds from the bond, what we can spend it on, and I don't know that. I, I don't know if Roosevelt Street would be included in the urban renewal.
I think will, it would be, right?
The urban renewal amendment that we did, as far as I recall, was just to state our purpose, to build a fire station within that urban renewal area. I did get an email back from Maggie about the, if we end up bonding and then we don't need to use all of the funds that we end up bonding for, what we can utilize us for, and she said that we could talk to Dorsey and Whitney and have them assist us with having some kind of hearing to state a separate. to state a separate purpose for the issue of bonding.
We can check that.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Other questions on that? Chief, any comments on the fire station?
Good.
All right, very good. Oh, any fundraisers coming up on your guys' side, or is it all pending better weather?
We're pending, like, the plans to be involved.
Okay, before we adjourn then, I'll go ahead and get final comments from everyone. We'll start on the right this time, council and Bozenberg. The old guy thought of his other thing.
He did.
All right, go ahead.
Welcome back, Dave.
And there we have it.
That's all for me.
That's all for me.
Chief, any comments? Danielle?
I did want to mention, I forgot to say, thank you to Bethany and Joe and Guy for their work on the lead with the township. They're taking extra time to put in hours to do that, especially on a Friday night at seven o'clock, so, thank you to them.
And Danielle as well.
I just like it, so, thank you. And then, as Chester mentioned, and as Lily mentioned, the budget meeting is this coming Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
Yes, and thank you to Chester, I know you put in some extra hours getting it ready.
I worked on it with Connie from Walker yesterday, and I will scan that and get that emailed out for a renewed prior to the meeting. I want to clean it up a little bit, so it just makes sense and looks pretty.
Guy?
I'm good.
All right, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Menson. Second by Bozenberg, any discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, the motion carries, thank you all.